I would like to call to order the May 27, 2025 ACSD Board Meeting to Order. As our normal practice, we will start with introductions, and I'm gonna start with Jason. I'm gonna do online first.
Jason Chalmers.
And then there's Ron, I believe.
Ron MacLiff.
Okay.
He'll be in for about an hour and a half, but I couldn't get a babysitter for this part of the meeting.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us. Suzanne?
Suzanne Buck.
Wendy Baker.
Bert Wilson.
Steve Orzek.
Laura Hartman.
Tricia Allen.
Steve Gash.
Jamie McCall.
Mary Heather Knobler.
Okay, excellent, and?
Jack Spannable and her back.
Excellent. Next, I would like to have a motion to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as warned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the agenda is adopted. Next up is our first public comment period, and just some guidelines. We definitely encourage public comments, and we would request that they are limited to three minutes. We don't have a large crowd, so that's fine. And as a reminder, the public comment, I'm sorry, as a reminder, the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, but rather an opportunity for board members to listen to our constituents. Public comments regarding personnel, students, or legal matters will not be heard by the board because it's a public meeting. Do, is anyone in the audience want to make a public comment? Okay, if you could state your name.
Gail Wood.
Okay.
Two 12-year-olds, AI-generated, so there's nobody's, okay, just keep them in mind. And this is regarding the middle school youth risk behavior survey. Many of you probably know what that's all about. I do as well, and all of the parents that I have spoken with regarding some of the way the words, the questions are worded are not happy. Vermont is only one of 13 states that includes the middle school in the YRBS. So I'm gonna read these questions, and then I'm just gonna stop, and I know we can't discuss, but I want you to say how the questions are worded is where I have problem, and the amount of information disseminated to the children in the form of the questions. How old were you when you first tried tobacco-flavored products? And then it gives them all out there. How old were you when you had your first drink of alcohol other than a few sips? During the past 30 days, what's the largest number of alcoholic drinks you had in a row? That is within a couple of hours. And it goes all the way up to 10 or more drinks, and as was pointed out, that's probably to weed out, you know, the people who just go, "We did everything way young." But it also might plant a seed into a young child's mind. 10 or more? They'd be dead, they're, they'd die of blood alcohol poisoning if they drank that many drinks. And what I, my problem is like, here it is again. How old were you when you first tried marijuana? Have you ever sniffed glue, breathed the contents of spray cans, or inhaled any paints or sprays to get high? If they didn't know before, they got it now. Sixth grade. Three months ago, that's maybe two months ago, it was given in the middle school. Here's a good one. The last time, the last time that you had sexual intercourse, did you or your partner use a condom? Okay, here we go. During the past 12 months, did you ever feel so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that you stopped doing some usual activities? Have you ever seriously thought about killing yourself? Have you ever made a plan about how you would kill yourself? Have you ever tried to kill yourself? And that's all I have.
Thank you, Gail.
You're welcome.
Your comments. Ellen is also on.
I just didn't know if you wanted her to introduce herself.
Yeah, Ellen, if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself.
Ellen Wheeling-Wade.
Okay. Excellent. Next.
Let's just confirm and make sure nobody online wants to.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Is there folks, is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was people online. Please.
Michelle, you should be able to speak. Can you hear us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, Michelle Middlebury, and I'm just, I'd like to make a comment in relation to the flag poll vote. I had a couple of questions about if there were policies and protocols in place to sort of limit the ability of a private citizen to influence school grounds and property.
So.
Michelle, just to clarify, this is a public comment period, and it's not really an exchange of information, so, I'm so sorry.
So I guess, oh, so I guess my comment would be, I would like the board to consider a formal policy for these kinds of situations. And while I think it's great that private citizens are excited and eager to contribute to our schools, I wonder if there are not constructive ways to guide them to do so without influencing the way that things are displayed on the school grounds. I guess that's it.
Michelle, well, I was just gonna ask Michelle what her last name was for the minute.
Yes, thank you. Do you mind stating your last name for a minute?
Uh, yes, it's Lesheeris.
Can you spell that, please?
Yeah, of course, L-E-S-H-E-R-I-S.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment online? Okay, seeing none. Next is recommendation to approve minutes of May 12, 2025. Can I have a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Jamie, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Any comments, feedback on the, yes, Steve?
Yeah, just one thing, I believe that a word got left out. My comments about the facilities, and it says here that ACSD should renovate schools that might close. I believe what I said, we should not renovate schools that should close, so.
Where is, where is that?
Page seven.
That's, ooh, that's down on page nine, towards the bottom.
Yep.
Did you find it? Any other comments? And as soon as we get through here, I'll have Ellie introduce herself. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Steve?
Hi, Dave.
Okay, Ellen, thank you. And go ahead, Ellie, you can introduce yourself.
Ellie Row.
Okay. Next up is approval of the ACSD bills, and Jason, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Good evening. On May 19, Suzanne Buck and I wrote the bills. There was one general fund warrant for $783,000 dated May 16. And there were two payroll warrants, both dated May 2. One for $1.29 million, and one for $65,000. Didn't have any issues or concerns. So I move that we approve the bills as read.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the bills indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the bills have been approved. Next up is report of the student representatives, but they're not here, so we'll skip to report of the superintendent, so.
Barbara, could I actually, Caitlin, I saw on the MUHS newsletter that it's posted that you're looking for a new student rep. Any interest in that position?
No, sitting here, I thought I should look at that.
Like putting her.
There was, there were no names in it on Friday.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Okay, next, report of the superintendent.
Okay, starting with personnel appointments and resignations, a couple I draw your attention to. One of them is Dr. Olga Nelly-Kolazo, who, with your blessing, is excited to join us in the position of Assistant Superintendent for Direct Specialized Services. She comes to us from New York. She's had experience as a Director of Student Services, and she currently works for Bozy's in the Capital Region, helping provide training to a number of schools served by that region in practices analyzing data, improving practices relative to student success in those areas, some having to do with student services and some having to do with general student performance and what that looks like. So, so she's, she is, I think, gonna be a really great contributor, you know, in the district, and she's, we're excited to have her. So, so that's one I wanted to make sure you saw. Sam Lewis is actually returning. You know, he's currently serving in the role of School Counselor, and he's returning to that same role, so he's a known entity. Emma is a social work hire that is actually part of the new team that's assembling at Mums in the continuing of alternative pathways. So, so you'll hear more about that in the next weekly Spotlight in terms of how those are kind of shaping up. Caitlin has a little bit of a nod to what's happening at the high school in her last newsletter. That's, that's exciting, and so, so I just wanted to point her out. Melissa Stewart is coming to us from Colorado, I think. She is a classroom teacher who specializes in STEAM, you know, which is science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics, and the way that those things are integrated together. So that's, that's, that's exciting. And I think, you know, sort of others, there's, people are moving and shifting around in terms of, you know, their, their plans and whatnot. So, so we're happy to present that slate as read.
Can I have a motion?
I move to appoint Olga Nelly-Kolazo Assistant Superintendent, 1.0 FTE. Samuel Lewis, School Counselor, 1.0 FTE. Emma Treddler, School Work, School Social Worker, 1.0 FTE. Melissa Stewart, Classroom Teacher, 1.0 FTE. And then to accept the resignation of Maurice Bissonnet, a Behavior Interventionist. Resignation of Paige Cusinelli, another paraprofessional. The resignation of Susan Herring, Custodian. Resignation of Josie Jordan, Special Educator. Resignation of Aiden McCullough, Paraprofessional. Resignation of Mitchell Patterson, Paraprofessional. And the resignation of Casey Volk, the School Attrition Manager.
And could I have a second? Okay, Mary Heather. Any questions? Okay, Tricia, then Steve.
Which school level will Melissa STEAM teacher be? Elementary, middle school, high school?
K-6.
K-6.
Steve?
And I noticed that the paraprofessionals, it's not designated what, what school they are currently working at. Does that create any holes for us for next year? I mean, that's, that's three.
The answer is always yes.
Okay.
You know, relative to, to paraeducators, you know, so most of them are contributing at Mary Hogan right now, and so they're already actively, you know, looking to fill those positions.
Any other comments, questions? Are we ready for the question? Okay, all those in favor of approving the appointments and resignations as listed in our agenda and also read by Suzanne, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Steve and Laura, thank you.
The next agenda item is to take a look at the Q4 financial projections, and should I talk while you make something appear, or?
I was gonna say Mary Heather could promote me.
So, so while Matt and Mary Heather are trying to make something appear, I could say that if you remember, when we built the budget for FY '26, we, it was really important to show where every dollar was going as we were looking at that, regardless of the source of the funds, whether they were local funds, grant funds, so on and so forth. So in looking at where we stand for, as we're ending this fiscal year, FY '25, Matt and I really worked to create a different picture for you that was inclusive of all the dollars. So, so it's my understanding that there were times in the past where you might, at this time of the year, have just sort of looked at where the general fund might stand, and that that's most often what finance committees have reviewed, you know, up to now. So we're actually putting together the whole picture, you know, that, so this is where we expect to be relative to, to all sources of expenditures. And, and, you know, I, I think part of the work that the Finance Committee and Matt will be looking at next year are what are the best ways to create interesting reports that are, you know, kind of at that mid-level to, to be able throughout the year to showcase different things that relate to financial oversight that is, is in between the small level of reviewing the bills to make sure that all the expenditures make sense and the macro level of, you know, do we expect to end the year somewhat on time? You know, like, like as we finish our hiring, we start the year. Are we fully staffed? If not, do we have gaps, you know, and do those create financial, you know, differences that are important to note? Things like that, you know, so, so we've worked hard to sort of put together a little something different, and Matt has a couple of things he can, he can walk you through relative to that. We expect this is the last financial report that you'll have until, you know, September or so, when actual end of year is, is clear.
Thank you. So we're calling this Q3 Plus because the data that we use, the actual data, goes all the way through the third quarter plus the month of April. So this data set is actual to the end of April, and then sort of predicts how the rest of the year will go, which is why in the meeting materials it says Q4 projection, right? So that's what we're trying to do, is figure out where the landing spot is gonna be and how much money we're gonna have when we get there. So, like we just talked about, we are looking at fiscal activity from July through the end of March plus April. We're adding additional accuracy in reporting, especially non-personnel expenses, since a lot of the purchasing has wrapped up by the end of, by the end of April. We only have two months of payroll left, which is another thing that, that helps add accuracy to this report, and it's valuable as a. And it's valuable as a first glance for our Q four outcome. So, it's really just the best picture of what we are looking at today. That's Q three plus. I think the other introduction as we're walking into this is financial reports kind of like telling a story, right? And as we go through the budget development cycle, we're looking at the story of the general fund and all the cost centers that are there. This year, we told it through a different lens than we normally do with all the blocks instead of just the traditional cost centers. But that story is sort of one book and one fund. And outside of that, we have additional funds in the districts that don't always get talked about during budget development. They don't always get talked about during financial reporting and generally speaking, they usually don't get talked about because there's nothing exciting happening in them. The story would usually go, we bring some money in, we spend exactly what we bring in on the things that we're supposed to spend it on and then we do it again next year. And there's never any variance, there's never anything that really pops up on the radar, which is why a lot of times this is where the focus is. Part of the report this year is folding a different story in, in the dissolution of the ACP programs, which started as a collaborative with the Mount Abe and Addison Northwest School Districts. That existed as a whole separate fund outside of the general fund because it was collaborative. It was cost shared equally between the three districts. So, as that program unraveled and the collaboration, or the programs are removed from the collaboration, there was activity in that fund that was not normal, right? Two-thirds of the revenue is not there, less what they paid in tuition for the students that, that they sent to those programs. So, that's gonna be an interesting story to look at and we're gonna, you know, work our way towards that, but we're starting with just the general fund expenses. And what we're gonna do here is we're gonna walk through expense in the general fund and then revenue in the general fund. How much did we bring in against how much we spent? And then we're gonna look at the net performance of the general fund based on those things. Touch briefly on some of the other funds that we published in the budget book, like the title grants, Medicaid, et cetera. And then we'll look at the, the bottom line performance on ACP and food service. So, I know this is really small and you have the same exact PDF in your board materials, so don't feel like obligated to squint at it, but it's good for people who are.
Actually, it's not, it's not in the.
Different one.
For some reason, it didn't get put in.
We have the summary.
We just have the one pager.
Q one and Q three.
Yeah, but we don't have.
This is the one pager.
Yeah.
It's just broken out.
On seven slides.
Is it plus?
Yeah, I mean, the numbers are slightly off. It's probably you've had one further update.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make sure that you have the right version.
So, you will have to squint.
I always like to start with debt because it's the most boring and easy one. Our debt service is shrinking this year. We had a loan mature and so we've got money left over in debt. That explains the variance there. What we're doing here is we're, we're adding projected expense column is adding what we've spent so far through the end of Q three plus, plus the last two months of guessing. Guessing happens in a couple of ways. It can happen by encumbrance, which is funds like salaries. We know how much a payroll is and we just project that that same expense is gonna hit each payroll. It's also guessing about things like, you know, how much a line will or won't get used towards the end of the year and sometimes that's a little fuzzier, so. Professional development and curriculum and district office and the board and technology are all hovering around right where we would like them with that like one to three percent surplus. DO and Board is where we hold a contingency line that is sort of a shared contingency line, so that's plus thirteen right now, but that's also holding funds that help balance out the, the overage in facilities, which is where some of the major emergency construction projects happen this year. There were water, water repair systems at Ripton and Waybridge. There was the Shoreham Classroom renovation and window project and the storage there. And then, I blanked on the other one.
Boiler?
Boiler at Mums, yeah. So, those were things that weren't in the budget plan but, but popped up over the course of the year and the contingency fund helps to offset those. Transportation is running a little over budget. The reason for that is we're now paying overtime on some of our routes. That was sort of a, a new addition to the negotiated agreement, which we're hoping to negotiate away from. We also had to add transportation services for high school students who are taking Career Center classes at the North Campus because we had previously benefited from a shuttle that the Career Center was providing and weren't able to provide this year, so we needed to, to have Betcha step in and do that for us. Career Center is running a little bit under budget, which was just, I think, a factor of not knowing where they were gonna land with their annual tuition as we were heading into our budget development season and based on where everybody was, we, we tried to be cautious with our, with our earmark for Career Center tuition. UPK is running under budget because we've shown the transfer of the coordinator to that realm, so we're actually running under budget. And we have moved a coordinator there this year as an additional expense because that's where, where they're gonna be in the FY twenty-six spending plan, so just made sense to kind of show it there this year. And then we're left with special ed and student services and direct instruction. In special ed and student services, running pretty significantly over budget, thirty-one percent. And that's balanced by some significant surplus in direct instruction, thirteen percent. Big reasons for the shift here, we had a lot of positions that started off in the direct instruction budget but migrated over. Think paraeducators who were designated to become one-on-ones this year, who had been budgeted as general ed paras or interventionists who had never been properly split between the two cost centers based on the percentage of time that they were spending working with kids on IEPs or kids not on IEPs and other things like that. So, this is, there's a lot of cleanup that goes on in here. We also had a, a student placed in a residential program this year that has a extremely high price tag. And that tuition is a factor of some of the overage here, which is also offset by extraordinary reimbursement. So, we break, we get money in from the state for all of the costs associated with that tuition after the first sixty-eight thousand dollars. I think it's like ninety-five percent of the cost after that, but, you know, that's a half a million dollar tuition for that student there, so. That's it for, oh, I guess the, the last thing that I'll note is we have that food service shortfall transfer. As you might recall, we always assume that food service is going to miss the mark in terms of they're gonna spend a little bit more than, than what they're gonna be able to bring in through the various reimbursement pathways that are open to them through state and federal reimbursements. We're sort of calibrating that. Last year, we came in with, I think, three or four hundred thousand dollars of bottom line expense, but we had already budgeted a hundred this year and so now we're saying, all right, well, let's, let's see if this is gonna fit. We'll see later kind of how food service is doing and that, but as we're, you know, each year, we're sort of eking closer to getting a handle on exactly what the general fund is gonna be asked to pay for the difference between food services expense to revenue. You can see our fund balance transfer here, which just passes in as revenue and out as expense. So, here are the other budgeted funds. Straight from the budget book. And I included these here with the sort of simplified version, which is the story I was telling you about before. What we, what we budgeted in the budget book is what we project to spend, which is what we project to bring in in revenue. So, there's very little variance. There's been no changes to federal grants, which would be the title grants and IDB, Medicaid and MAC, or the various miscellaneous special funds that we get each year. Those are all shown as, as offsetting a hundred percent, no variance. So, now the money. We have, just to recap, the same one point four million here in revenue that we just showed on the previous slide and expense for those other funds. So, they're, they're there. We have our fund balance revenue passing through. We have our education spending grant, which is the major grant that we get from the state. And in order to get that, we first have to back out all of the other state and local sources of revenue that come in to reduce our, our ed spending amount. So, that's the census block grant and then these other general fund grants within there, you're gonna see small schools grant, transportation assistance grant, ELL grant was new this, this year in, in the other general fund grants section. We're also bringing in tuition for our tuition students in that, in that realm, so that's where we would see, you know, I think, close to a million dollars of tuition coming in. And I think the, the increase that you see here coming in a little bit over is, I think, due to the, some of those extra costs of that tuition that I was talking about before, that high tuition. You know, this is the net effect of that money coming in, but also, you know, having a few things like tuition that, that, you know, enrollment didn't materialize the way we thought it would. So, we're projecting a little bit above where we expected to be on, on revenue, but, but not much. This is also something that, at this time of the year, like we're, there aren't too many surprises left, we hope, but this outstanding revenue and, and what we have left to gain reimbursement for or last tuition payments to come in is sort of an observation zone. So, we're, we're trying to keep our eye on that line to see, see where we land on, on the last, last revenues of the year. So, if we take all of that and combine it or compare it, we have revenues and we have expense and that equals the fund balance for that fund. We have our three very straightforward offsetting ones here, which don't contribute anything net to the, to the fund balance picture. And then we have our general fund, so we're right now projecting a surplus of about one million thirty-five thousand dollars. On our nearly fifty-one million dollar total budget, that's, that's a really good margin of surplus to have on a budget this size and it, you know, kind of makes us feel like we calibrated things correctly and did a good job spending and bringing in money this year. So, all things considered, that's a good landing spot and we're, we're happy with how that general fund picture looks. And if that was the last chapter of the book, but it's not. So, in here on the bottom line, we have put our third into ACP, right? Remember, third, a third, a third. So, we had in our general fund budget, transfer of one-third of the ACP projected expenses to those funds. We've done that transfer, this is what we're left with. But ACP is still holding a balance, so. Here's our alternative program activity. And I'm sorry, earlier when I said ACP, I, I didn't mention our two O eight program, which is not part of the collaborative. It's something that we've owned from its inception and started this year in response to, to need and was sort of a extra budgetary programmatic addition to our, to our district. So, that's in here as a bottom line expense too. So, if we're just gonna look at alternative program activity, we had two, two things. We had the addition of the two O eight program for about three hundred thousand. And then we had the ACP story. So, ACP combined is ACP High School and ACP Middle School. They combined to about one point one seven million and we actually spent under that a little bit. I think that was a surplus of, you know, twenty-five thousand, give or take. But here's the story, right? Projected revenue of only five hundred and forty-four thousand. And here's the breakdown by district of, of who paid what based on our obligation to cover all of the costs, so here's what we paid from the general fund. And then what Addison Northwest and Mount Abe paid based on the tuition students that they sent to those programs this year. When we combine the ACP programs with the two O eight program, the bottom line is a net negative of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Remember, that's outside of the general fund, but it does affect the, the district's financial overall position, right? One of the things that's important to realize is none of this would ever really see daylight necessarily on an audit because it would sort of be recorded separately. And in an audit, you have starting balance and an ending balance and then the activity of the year in between and each fund is, is audited separately and then they're sort of combined in the way that we're doing it here. But they're also combined with their starting balance, which is sometimes called basis and then ending base, you know, so it's, it's, it, it sort of gets swallowed up in a way. And so, we wanted to make sure to be transparent and straightforward with how this is happening so that we can tell the right story and make sure that it's, it's fully understood. In food service, we budgeted one point four million dollars, one point five million in total program costs. That's everything from catering and adult meals to all the kids and, you know, all of the food and equipment and, and labor that goes into the program. We, you can see here, projected revenue are slated to bring in one point seven million. So, the difference there shows an increase, I was sorry, a significant uptick in usage of our food service program, which we saw this year, which is a good thing. Like, we get a lot of great feedback on food service. People like it, kids are eating a lot more than normal. We had two really successful free adult meals programs that were sort of morale boosters during the in-between times and the, the dark days of winter and early, early spring. But we also see that, you know, the expense lines coming in higher than revenues for a shortfall of a hundred and thirty-six thousand. So, that's on top of the hundred that was budgeted, an additional hundred and thirty-six thousand. What does that tell us? Well, it tells us we need to take a look at that and say, all right, well, is there, you know, hit to the general fund? The next time we write a budget, gonna be more like two hundred thousand? Two hundred and forty thousand? We don't know. You know, so that, that's, that's the work that goes in, once we get a number set like this, to sort of figuring out the puzzle. You know, one thing that we are looking at in food service is there are some times like this year where we buy a truckload of food in the spring because we're out of food and we need to bring it in. We have, you know, these summer programs that we're running in July and August. And that grocery bill could be two hundred thousand dollars. Big grocery bills. But if the food sits in storage freezer or on the shelf until the summer programs kick in in July, then the reimbursements for those, that, those purchases in FY twenty-five are realized in FY twenty-six. So, if you have a hundred thousand dollars a product, this doesn't look as bad, right? Because that's an asset that you could, you could put up against. You can only pull that once though. So, there, there's calibration happening.
Matt, I have a question.
Sure.
Going back to the ACP and looking at that column, you know, you mentioned trying to tell the story and I, I don't know that I totally picked up. And I, I don't know that I totally picked up on what the conclusion was. Based on that column, it looks like ACSD spent about 65% of kind of that total in terms of expenses. Does that align with the students that were utilizing those services? Like, that would be helpful for me to understand, like, how many students from the three separate districts.
Yeah, good question. So when we set out on this year's budget, our plan was not to fund per student. Our plan was to fund a third of the overall cost. So this ACSD number was sort of meant to be a rough third of the overall cost. And, you know, that, that would have gotten evened out over invoicing and whatnot. So that, that's the relationship between what we've paid and, and what the overall budget was. The other, the other two switched from paying a third each to paying per student because they removed the programs from the, from the collaborative consortium, which governed the, the early years of them. So, um, am I answering your question?
Yeah, no, that's definitely helpful context. And I also will recognize I may have missed some of that in previous discussions.
The other thing I will say, as far as like next year goes and what we're doing, the lease that we held for ACP High School expired and we have vacated it. So we're, we're, we're not going to be in Vermont Sun anymore, which is a, a good thing. And we're working on a, um, summer renovation project at the high school for, um, alternative programming there. And then for the middle school program, we're working on, um, a fit up at Mums that will receive a program there that was at South Village Green, which was a lease that we were, uh, worried about because it lasted, I think, three more years after this year and, um, four more years. And we had a very expensive escape clause from that lease. State of Vermont has offered to move in as a new tenant, which is going to help us get out of there for, for, um, no money, which is great.
Sure.
Good news.
Jamie, and then Mary Heather, have her hand up. Did you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll hear what they have to say. I might have something.
Okay.
Your answer to Steve's question raised my question, which is, so you're saying we're paying a third? But I can't read those other two lines, but they are, I guess I thought you were going to say, and they're paying a third and they're paying a third. That's not what you said. So does the whole thing get covered somehow?
Yeah, it's a bottom line expense to our general fund.
Right. That's why we're over.
We're paying 65%.
It's 65%.
All in the bag.
16%.
I see. So that's, okay. I can't read that number.
So, so there's a $580,000 shortfall between what we brought in in, in revenue based on our third and their, um, students who paid tuition.
Right, right, right.
And, and what the total costs were.
Got it.
Mary Heather.
So just to kind of catch us up, I mean, this isn't new information that the consortium agreement has fallen apart. And we've been told that, we knew that even going into FY '26 budgeting. But I think it would be helpful for us to understand and for the public record, like, how that fell apart. And I don't want to take us down to a rabbit hole, but I do think there's some explanation as to why ACSD is holding, holding all the bills for this agreement that was supposed to be equally split three ways. Is there a little bit that you can say just about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's a really good question and one that we've been sort of trying to, um, study and put together. It's, it's really hard to answer your question because the people who made the decision are not here anymore. And, um, and the forensics have not yielded, uh, the answer that was made in a meeting in a room somewhere that then, you know, uh, so I think that, you know, just some of the, um, the context that we know is that heading into their really hard budget seasons, Mount Abe and Virgens were both, um, struggling to figure out what they were going to do relative to, to these programs. I think that at one point, um, you know, it was looking like at least one of the districts probably wouldn't have any kids to send and they were obligated to pay a third of the costs. And so I think that, that, at that point in time, the board of the ACSEC, which is the Addison County Special Education Collaborative, the board composed of the superintendents at the time, this was Tim, Patrick and Sheila, and the special education directors, it would have been Nicole for us at that point in time, met to, um, to work out a solution, which ultimately led to this idea that ACSD would sort of retain the, um, custodial rights to the program, the creative control over the program, and, uh, the ability to, to, to offer tuition spots to, um, to other districts.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, so just, uh, it's not my question, but to tag on to that, this does provide an extremely valuable service. If we had a contract outside the district, it would be much more expensive than half a million dollars to provide a lot of these services. So, um, yes, we should relook at this, but we should be very careful about saying, let's not do this anymore, because that could be a million or $2 million to contract those services outside of the district. Just, just as a point of clarity. But my, um, my real question was, based on this stuff that you said is not being counted against the general fund, we are in fact closer to only about $300,000 in, uh, over, rather than a million dollars over. Is that a correct read on that?
It's coming. Next slide.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's fun.
You know, one of the things that I think I would just add to your point, Steve, if I might, is that, um, you know, I, I, I also think Addison Northwest may have had a different, you know, director of student services, right? So, so I, I think the idea was to try one model and then when it looked like that model wasn't viable, try another model. I think the expectation was that districts would have enough students and that it would probably be, you know, somewhat of a wash. It just didn't turn out that way. So we have already changed our model, you know? Um, as I, as I mentioned in talking about Emma coming on as a social worker, we've already incorporated things differently. You'll remember when we did the budget part, we have some, some administrative staff that related to those programs, those positions that we didn't necessarily continue with. So, so we've already worked together to create something that is more in-house, more, you know, streamlined, and we believe will actually serve a, a higher number of our students. The 208 program will, is the only, is the only place in which, if we have room, we would make a tuition seat available to other districts. And, and that's just if we don't need all the space for our students, which is, is, um, looking unlikely at this point. It looks like, actually, we will be having more students that are taking advantage of that program. So, so we've already done that streamlining and, and that work. Our principals have done great work, working with folks who really have a sense of what these programs have been able to do to just try to figure out, how do we, how do we make something that's a little new? You know, that actually is, it looks like it's working in a K-12 basis and it, and it's in-house and it's more streamlined. So, so, you know, we've already made those changes and those adjustments. And it's, it's no, um, it's no knock on the other districts. I think it's just, this is, you know, started in one way. It ended in this way. You know, unfortunately for us, there's a financial reality to it that, that is, is unfavorable. You know, but the most important thing is that we're putting all of this in front of you. We're knowing all of these things together. And we're talking about the ways in which we've made different choices, you know, relative to moving forward.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, to be clear, for me asking the question, I was interested in understanding the numbers better and why they look that way. And I can totally hear Steve's point that it may be something to continue, kind of tying back to Matt's point about what story does it tell? I'm just thinking about kind of the larger education context where there's more interest in collaboration. And the larger story that tells is just the care that's needed to establish those relationships and to make sure that stuff is thought out. Because, yes, in some ways it's easier, like collaborate here, we both have the same need. You got to have those agreements ironed out because this may be the situation. People could interpret a variety.
Yeah, great.
Last slide, Matt.
Last slide. Guys have been a wonderful audience. If we sum everything up, and remember, these are still going to be three separate funds. When the auditor takes a look at them and they'll get reconciled with the starting basis to create an ending basis. And, um, you know, this number won't really ever pop up in any other capacity other than to just say, this is the, this is the bottom line result of what's gone on in our district this year. You know, we ran a million dollar surplus in the general fund based on the plan that we had in place. And then based on things that didn't go according to plan, we ran, you know, uh, sort of an offsetting deficit. And, you know, with, with a, a small, um, positive net activity projected as the, the end result. Remember the observation zone that I talked about with revenue before? You know, there, there's a good likelihood that that would, um, you know, move this needle. Uh, I couldn't tell you which direction, um, hopefully, uh, was positive. But, um, that's why we're keeping an eye on it as we head into the finish line here. But that's, uh, that's sort of the bottom line. And, um, you know, again, uh, as, as alternative programming comes back into the, uh, school buildings, those, um, those won't, won't be tuition programs anymore. They won't be collaboratively, um, cost shared anymore. They will, um, function once again as sort of just like general funds, student services, expenses, which will make, uh, the storytelling a little bit easier on those.
This is also, um, this is a complex budget to manage compared to other districts, in part because of, I think, our geography. You know, we have, we have a plan, a spending plan, and then there's how do we get to that plan? So sometimes it's not a funding problem, it's a finding problem, right? Or it's a, uh, it's, it's, um, many things are quite a bit different to plan, you know? And, and I think, um, it's kudos to all the people that manage, um, aspects of these budgets because, um, we, you know, displayed creativity almost from the get-go. You know, in terms of, okay, we wanted to have this or three of these, and we don't have three of those, and so we'll have that person do that and plus this other thing, and, you know, we'll hire one of these instead. And, you know, so, so I, I think, and that goes on all year long in this district. And, and that is a much more complicated management than needed. I mean, we knew, I think, the, one of the first meetings that Matt and I had when I started a year ago was to discuss the, um, anticipated shortfall that he could see in, um, in student services related to some of these pieces. And, you know, so it's, it's taken actually the work of a lot of people to only get to that place where, where we're, we're looking like we're likely to be slightly in the black as a whole. And that's, that's, that doesn't, you know, that, that would, that took intentional work on many people's parts to do with only what we had to do with. You know, we didn't replace Nicole's position, right? We didn't, there are a lot of things that, that people just absorbed and worked with so that we could have the best chance to be on the right side of the line as possible. And I think that's really important to acknowledge. You know, building principals worked with those things. You know, district program leads worked with those things. Obviously, you know, Matt and Kathy kept a very close eye on where we are and what, what, what things are looking like. So it, it's not without effort.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you. I know you've done a lot of spreadsheet work here and tracking and, and the good news is it came out positive, so.
Slightly.
Thank you.
Slightly. We hope.
Slightly. Yes, thank you. So that we.
There will be a summer.
Yes.
Maybe.
Yeah. So that sort of leads us actually nicely into, um, kind, just a little bit of an update in terms of goals, superintendent areas. There are three priority areas that, um, that, you know, I'm thinking about and, and our team is kind of just talking about relative to the things that need to be done next year that, that I'm thinking might be focal areas of mine. And I'd just like to try them on for size with you and get your sense as to, yeah, does that feel good? Does that feel right? And also, if there are particular pieces within that that, um, that relate to specific indicators or actions, you know, that you have in mind, you can just say them. So, so, you know, in addition to helping the board with the goals that you have relative to community engagement and then student outcomes, um, obviously, we're kind of in the process of adopting a different model and structure relative to our specialized services. We have a new assistant superintendent coming on that is from New York, going to need to learn Vermont regs, right? Going to kind of need to integrate into that work. That's a, that's not a light lift. And that's something that, that I will need to continue to help, to support, to make sure that, that as, as, um, as she's integrating, it's continuing the good work that our teams are doing and thinking about how to bring us forward so that our services in that area are impactful and efficient. That's going to have to be an area of focus, you know? And I, I think a superintendent, when, um, working well, I mean, you know, our efforts get done through the efforts of other people, right? So, you know, that's, um, that's just going to have to be an area of, of focus. And we'll just kind of see what that means. Um, the other one actually is Courtney and I talk about a lot. Uh, you know, it relates to really thinking about an infrastructure that helps us to make student success more predictable for more kids across our district. Whether that's, um, making some decisions about what is the data that we're collecting and how is that lining up? And, and how, what are we doing with what we know? Uh, and, and how are we measuring the impact of what we're doing based on what we think we know? So, so, you know, that work is, is well underway with Courtney's leadership. Actually, both Nellie and, um, Sonia, who are coming, who's coming on as our Director of Equity, Inclusion and Restorative Practice, have deep backgrounds in, um, multi-tiered systems of supports, data, student performance data and school performance data and what that looks like. So, so really just helping shepherd that team along with the building principals and thinking about, all right, how are we lifting up that, that, um, that infrastructure that supports student success across the district? And to be, to be, you know, predictable, not only on state testing, you know, results. That connects in to the work that the Board Student Outcomes Committee is doing and thinking about what are the ways we're thinking about student success? And what are the actions that we need to take in order to, to build a, a fabric that is, can hold the weight, you know, of, of what, what we'd like to see students all be able to do? So there's a second area. And the third area is, is really kind of a leftover for, didn't get to this in year one, so we'll add it to the list for year two. And, and that's really facilities. You know, year one, Matt and I spent a lot of time on finance, obviously, being able to kind of develop an equity-based budget based on the board's goal. And, and the, that really felt like a, an important priority for the board. So, um, you know, having done that work, we'll continue to do that and refine that. But, you know, the capital improvement planning process and really kind of taking a look at our facilities and, and being able to bring that forward in, in a meaningful way is something that is, uh, is where I'll, I'll need to provide some attention and, and support, you know, to Matt and Bruce and the team in terms of bringing that forward, um, which includes the use of the Ripton Elementary School facility, right? And, uh, and as well as work with our architects and, and helping to discern community engagement processes that go along with those things and educational outcomes relating to teaching and learning. So, um, so those are sort of priority areas, I think. You know, relative to my work, Suzanne is, is, is a welcome voice in my ear to say things like, don't take on too much, right? Make, try to make, try to, you know, boil these things down in ways that really, you know, make sense. But in reality, those are, those are three areas that I think. But in reality, those are three areas that I think are, they're kind of queued up and on the plate. So I'm interested in what you hear, when you hear me talk about those, if that feels like, okay, that's a, those are reasonable things, or if there's something I'm not mentioning that's important, as we go into refinement mode, and come up with something that feels like it's more smart, in terms of measurable and all that. Thoughts?
Sounds like a full plate.
Yes.
Yeah.
I see it as someone like a juggler with the poles and the plates, trying to keep them all going, because they are all, they're very meaty.
Big, yes.
Goals.
Yeah.
They're all necessary goals, but they're going to need a lot of help in both directions to make sure they all stay balanced.
Jason, who says, Andrew.
Jason.
I would love to see these written down, because I'm a very visual person. So I don't know if we have them in written form, that we can share, or not?
Not yet. I think the idea is, does this resonate as sort of three areas, priority areas, that makes sense? And then, from here, you know, then it's a matter of kind of writing down, these are priority areas. Here's some goal statements, and here's what I think we could see at the end of the year as an indicator of success in all those areas. Getting too far down that road, without being able to at least check in together, you know, felt like, you know, that it's better to check in first, I think.
So what would be a good time? Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jason.
I was going to say, it sounds great, Jim.
Yeah, and I think maybe after folks have had a chance to reflect on what she shared, we could maybe talk about what the calendar could look like, and really, that next step of forming the goals, and, you know.
Well, I'm thinking by the time the next meeting comes, they'll be formed.
Okay, okay.
This is pretty much a change for input, you know? So, yeah, they'll be formed, there'll be statements written and whatnot, so, yeah.
What I was going to suggest is, I mean, obviously, this will be captured, this discussion will be captured in minutes, and I can take that part of the minutes and just ship it to you guys, to make sure that you've seen, you know, the summary, and writing at least the priority areas in writing, and then send whatever you need to along by the end of the week, perhaps, to Dr. Baker. Does that sound like a reasonable, just way to get actual feedback from?
It is, however, I think the superintendent's goals are, it's important to have that discussion in the public forum, because the superintendent's goals are the organization's goals, right? It is what directs several million dollars' worth of work, you know, right? The salaries of the administrators in this district are about $4 million, the leaders in this district, right? When you're thinking about, like, when you take everybody into account, the system principals, curriculum leaders, all of that, you know? And the goals that I have relate to the goals that the organization has, you know, in terms of, these are areas where we really want to make improvement. And so it isn't so much me, it's more, this is work we're doing, these are focal points that we are doing, and our efforts together are going to get that done. I mean, the good news is, we have a wonderful team, you know, there's a wonderful, talented group of folks. And so I think it's really that gut check, you know, does that sound, does that sound, you know, like what you would hope, that we would be putting our intentionality towards, you know, across the district in those three areas?
So looking at, say, the next meeting, if we have actual goals that are written, that are smart goals, then we could have a discussion on the agenda, you know, for folks to ask questions about those, that kind of thing, if that makes sense to folks. And, yeah, and kind of clarify whatever. Not necessarily to change the goals, per se, but there could be questions about what does that really mean, that kind of thing.
Sorry, just to follow up, I think it will be helpful for the board to understand our role in supporting those goals.
Yes.
Because what I'm specifically thinking about is your goal related to facilities, and how much of that goal, you know, depends on the work of the facilities committee, work of the policy committee, and also what's happening in the state? So, yeah, just one quick question, sorry, Jess.
No, I was just going to say, to like, give feedback, that those three areas feel right to me, just looking back on, you know, the annual meeting and hearing about discussions around the budget, that was approved, and some of the reports that we've gotten in the last few months since then. And especially excited about number one, because I personally have been spending time with the strategic plan, and thinking a lot about goal two around access, and how that relates to special education and specialized student services, and just really seeing that as like, the bedrock to access in our district, right? Like, if folks who need the most support to access certain levels of success, right, starting everything from that lens. So I don't know if they were ranked in order, but I'm happy to hear that that was number one.
That's helpful. Good, this part of the superintendent's report was just sort of talk, say those priority areas out loud, give you a chance for any kind of feedback that you have. And we'll go ahead and make some specific, you know, statements and materials, and bring them back at the next meeting from there. But sometimes, it's hard to, it's hard to see all that at once, you know, rather than just talking about some priority areas first, so. So the last part of the superintendent's.
Before we move on, I do have two thoughts. One, it's not so much a goal, but I think it's very important just to reflect on the previous year. So just, if there's some space within that process to look back at the past year, successes, opportunities for growth, like, it's very hard to make that a smart goal, but I think it's so important, especially doing necessary work like this. And then, the only other one is, you know, you said the 4 million in terms of admin, admin staff, but then, thinking of Matt's numbers that he showed, I forget if it was 22 million for direct instruction, I do wonder if maybe a broader goal isn't staff supports. You know, I look at the list of appointments and resignations every board meeting. I don't know how that tracks with other districts. I heard Steve's question earlier about the paraprofessionals, and, you know, just some gaps in places. I also see the larger conversation that system stresses that are on it, and I just, if there was some space in there, I know yours was focused on the new assistant and superintendent, and I think that totally makes sense. But I wonder if, as a board, if there's an interest in more broader staff supports there, if that's appropriate, so.
Yep, I think it will come up in the specialized services piece particularly, you know, that's part of that, part of that work in that area. And there are some, there's some specific pieces that are kind of in play, which is another, it's a nice opportunity to say, here's what's on the docket for these areas, which, you know, it's just understanding, what's the work? What's the conversation, you know, that's happening there? And part of my job is always to see that that's well-resourced, and it's going well, and, you know, people are feeling like they're moving through some of these things in ways that are making a difference, and are feeling like we're doing better things for kids. So that's a good reminder, you know, relative to that. All right, moving on? So legislative, yes, legislative update? You probably have seen that Senator Hardy came around and offered an amendment to H. 454 on the Senate side after the bill that had made it through Senate Education and Finance was pulled back, you know? And it just didn't have enough support by those in the Democratic Party to move forward, you know, according to the Senate leadership. And so Senator Hardy worked with Senator Von Gartes to come up with a different approach that the Senate could express support for in a voice vote on Friday night at 6:30. So that has had a readout in the House, and is on its way to conference committee. In conference committee, what's important, the rules of how conference committee is supposed to work, is that they are supposed to only be looking at language differences between the House version and the Senate version, and reconciling when there's a difference. So an example of that is, in the House side, it says, here are the people in the committee to determine what the districts look like. And in the Senate side, it says, well, actually, here's a different list of people who should be working together over the summer to determine what the districts look like. Both texts have decided that over the summer, a group of people will work together to come up with proposals about what the districts will look like. That shouldn't come off the table. That shouldn't change, but maybe the people, right, they'll figure out, okay, here's what we could agree on together. So there's, no new ideas in conference committee is the standard. That is not always an easy one for the legislators to uphold. So conference committee members, you know, are Representative Conlin, Representative Kornheiser, and Representative Taylor, I think, from the House. The Senate has Senator Von Gartes, Senator Cummings, and Senator Beck, you know? And so they will be working together to figure out if they can, if they can come up with a common bill, that then the House and Senate will both vote on. So there are, there are, there's a lot of political pressure coming for nothing to make it out of conference committee. And that is coming from a number of political points that don't normally agree, converging on the idea that none of this actually feels like good legislation that makes a difference for kids. It's focused more on how we can spend less, instead of what is it that our kids need? And I think that is certainly a sentiment that is shared by the professionals in the education. I think I, you know, as I've said to you, I think many of us were hoping that opportunities for kids would really be at the forefront of some of these conversations, and that has been very difficult to make it through the political process. And so what has come at the political process instead is a greater focus on cost. And not that that's not important, but lots of the other pieces of the pie, you know, have been lost in the conversation. And so there are a number of groups that are feeling like that is not okay, and also, the loss of local control from voting on budgets is not okay, and maybe even having bigger districts is also not okay. Bigger meaning, you know, bigger at all, in some people's minds, and bigger meaning beyond, you know, maybe our size. So the votes are supposed to take place on Friday. I, either Barb or I will probably be sending out other updates as we go along. I would expect this to shift about every two hours, you know, as they get going. So, good news is, we do have members of our legislative delegation who are calling to say, hey, can you just verify that this is what's going to be the situation for you? And, you know, is this where we are? And so that feels good, you know, that their people are checking in to make sure, from Addison County, to make sure that information that is correct about implications for us in what they're considering, you know, is on the table, and that feels good. I've been very appreciative to our delegation for doing that, so. Any questions about that, that I can help with? I have nothing further.
Okay. And believing, I won't be sending emails every time something seems to happen, I'll probably wait until the end, or one of us will. Go ahead, Steve.
I just want to make the observation that, at the end of the day, if this ends up not passing. What happens is, we're back to square one, we go with what's already in legislation.
Yes.
So, you know, next year could be, oh, wait a minute, you know, like Act 127 was, oh my God, the sky is falling, and then, never mind. And so we may end up back there, or we may end up with something else, or Scott may veto this, and, you know, so.
In the meantime, we have kept our eye on the ball of our kids in our classrooms, and what it is that we need to be doing, and I think, you know, we've tried to take in stride what it is that we need to be paying attention to, and yet, you know, not stopped doing the things that we need to be doing, relating to ensuring that our kids are learning well. So I think that feels like a reasonable position.
And kind of adding to that, I really feel good that last year, we set a goal about the equity-based budget, and the work that we did there, that really, I think, helped us as we went into this process, right? Because we knew better what our costs were, that kind of thing. And that's what's driving us now, right, is our equity-based budget. So, you know, so I think it's a good thing. I wish everyone was looking at it from that perspective. It would maybe make things a little easier. But I, I'm just like, it's fortuitous that that was the goal that we selected last year. I, you know, am really pleased that it was the case, so.
I think the other thing that's helpful to those of us in the field is that the, there's also an acknowledgement that the work of this legislative session, while some of it certainly was interesting and helpful, and may prove promising, it doesn't address many of the drivers that are outside the control of education, like tremendously, we may get, we may get health insurance increases that are upwards of 20% in this next budget cycle. You know, there's nothing that is irresponsible about education spending, when you have to take into account, right, those kinds of things, like that, that doesn't, when you have to present a budget that is higher than your taxpayers are remotely interested in seeing, that reflects some of those pieces, you know, that's not within our control, and that's something that every sector in our industry is facing. So unfortunately, some of the things that haven't gotten done, those structural pieces, I think that's also on the minds of the public that's weighing in on this process right now, and others to say, you know, if we are taking some of these steps, but we are also not working at some of these drivers that are structural, you know, our kids are not getting the full service of our attention, and that doesn't necessarily feel good. So those voices are beginning to come to the surface.
Yep. Well, thank you so much for your report. Next up is, under reporter, the chair, is our continuation of the board goal-setting work that we started and discussed last time. And what we had decided at the last meeting was that the student achievement, I'm sorry, the student academic progress and wellness goal needed to be reworked some, right? And so what you have on the agenda, just so it wasn't in Board Pack as well, was a marked-up version of the previous goal, right? So I actually just kept it so you saw exactly what changed. And we didn't get inputs, so at our executive committee meeting, we took a crack at making this a little bit more focused on what would happen during the next year, right? So it's a little more smart-based than it was before. It was more open over a couple of years, the way it was written. So the way we proposed in the executive committee that the goal could be worded is as follows, "The ACSD Board will develop and follow a timeline to define a process for public review of multiple measures of academic progress and student wellness. The timeline will incorporate a regular reporting schedule for student data, as well as targets for identifying policy, priorities, and additional measures of academic progress and wellness." Okay? Thoughts? Steve?
Yeah, as one of the people who said, yeah, I wasn't comfortable with that, I am much more comfortable with this goal. Yeah, as one of the people who said, yeah, I wasn't comfortable with that, I am much more comfortable with this goal. This is way better. I'm, I am, I am totally in support of this one.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone, is just Jason online now?
Ellen in Rockwater.
No, I'm still here.
Okay, I don't see you, so I just wanted, I don't want to ignore you.
I'm here as well.
Yeah, they're both here, we just.
And I'll see you guys shortly in person.
Okay. Any comments? Any suggested changes?
Whoa.
Looks great.
Okay. Then could I have a motion? Suzanne.
I'll move to approve the Student Academic Progress and Wellness Goal, which reads, "The ACSD Board will develop and follow a timeline to develop, to define a process for public review of multiple measures of academic progress and student wellness. The timeline will incorporate a regular reporting schedule for student data as well as targets for identifying policy priorities and additional measures of academic progress and wellness."
I'll second.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay, seen none, seen no hands online. Is it okay if I don't reread it again? Okay. Okay, all those in favor of adopting the Student Academic Progress and Wellness Goal as included in our, on our agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Cool. We got our, our goal.
Did Ellen vote?
Did, yeah. Ellen, were you able?
Jason gave a thumb, thumbs up.
Yep, I, yes, I'm an aye.
Okay, thank you.
I'm an aye as well.
Okay, thank you. Next up, received an email that I forwarded to folks that we've been nominated as a district, our board, for the V S B A Board Excellence Award. And the only reason I have this on, there's a questionnaire that we have to fill out. So, we provide more information. So, we're nominated, that doesn't mean we've won yet. And I was just wondering if it would be okay if the executive committee took this on, filling out this questionnaire on behalf of the board? Is that okay for you folks?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and, you know, fill that out. I think it has to be in by the end of June. I'll go back and look at that. And I actually should put that on our agenda for the executive committee meeting. Next, just briefly, wanted to mention on Friday, the chairs of Mount Aide, Addison Northwest, Lincoln, and ACSD, you know, the chairs got together and had coffee, and we didn't solve the world's problems by any stretch of means. It was mainly, you know, kind of sharing people, our views on, you know, what we saw with the bill, the education bill at that point in time. And, you know, just folks, a few folks were sharing kind of their thoughts about, you know, district consolidation, one of which was even saying having an SU kind of thing. So, the group has decided that on a monthly basis, that we should get together. And it's not necessarily just for, you know, the bill, the education, but just to share things that are happening in the district, you know, that kind of thing. And so, if anything comes up, I will definitely share that. We have the board. The next one is going to be up in Virgins. And it's, you know, good to collaborate and just chat. Not that as board chairs, you know, we're setting anything, but if something does come up that says, oh, that's kind of an interesting idea, I'll bring it back to the, to the board. Okay? Any questions on that?
I think one of the things that Kim shared with you
Yes.
was that AI summary of the meetings.
Yes, 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 exactly. That was actually very helpful, having that, being able to look at that. And I never knew that existed. So, that was, that was a cool thing that I then shared to all of us. So, that's, that's a positive. Thank you, Steve. Next up is report of the board. And I want to point out in the meeting materials that we put in here a report of the board for May 27, 2025. And what, during our last executive committee meeting, we were trying to think how we might be able to streamline things a little better. And what has happened over the last several weeks, months, is we haven't really had a report of the board on the agenda. And partly because we had just reordered and committees were just gearing up, that kind of thing. And so, the thought is if folks provide like a just written little blurb of what's going on in the committee, then we could put it in this report. You could send them to me, I'd be happy to, you know, you know, cut and paste them together. And then, during the meeting itself, what we would do is spend time asking questions about the material that had been submitted, but not necessarily go through everything that was already, you know, written in the report. It makes it public because it's part of the meeting materials, you know, so anybody can take a look at it. And Suzanne, you know, she did an example for this one, which is for the CPAC. You know, just so that you could see, you know, what that might look like. So, are folks okay with us doing that, you know, chairs?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, and so, as a result, what I need, right, is by Wednesday, close of business, is to have your update. That way, I can get it together for Darcy, you know, for the board materials. I was going to say Board PAC again, for the board materials. And if you look at, you know, kind of what I wrote here, just a reminder that if in fact, through the course of your committee work, if there is something that you do need more time on the agenda, to please let us know so that we can make sure that we're highlighting that and, and identify the time that's required. You know, the purpose of this isn't necessarily, you know, this report isn't to be a substitute for dialogue where we need discussion, right? But it would be really helpful if in the early part of the week before we met, we knew that that was something that's coming, like, oh, you know, I have, we have policy, ABC, that, you know, we need to have on the agenda, that kind of thing, so that we plan for it. Okay? Any questions, thoughts? And, you know, and so we'll see how it goes, you know, but I think it has, you know, thank you Suzanne, it was her idea. And, and if you look at the rules.
Well, it's actually an idea that's been offered numerous times in the past, but.
Yes. Well, it takes us a while sometimes. And it is, you know, if you look back, kind of even at the Vermont School Board Association materials, they do talk about written reports. So, I think it, it really becomes part of the record in a better way as well. Okay, Steve?
I am generally supportive of it, but I do worry, just that it's a bit duplicative with minutes. In that if you have minutes from those committee meetings, and then you have another written record, and then you also have a digital video record, that you're actually kind of getting into triplekitt.
Yeah.
And I think it would save us as a board time, but then does it put more work on the individual who has to write that report? And so, like, I just, I don't know, like, yeah, I, I guess I'm trying to sort through that consideration because we definitely don't want to end up in a situation where the minutes say this, and then the report says that. That's not going to be put onto there, so.
And, and I think, you know, if, from my perspective, and I'll let others, and I'll call on Ellen in a second too, it's, you know, we definitely have the details in the minutes, but it's more, this is kind of a summary that you're bringing forward to the board. It's not like all the minutes that you've accumulated over time. It's really the highlights to basically say, you know, we're working on, you know, ABC. It's kind of like a summary of the minutes that have happened over the course of the month. And, and again, this report would be part of that last board meeting, the second board meeting of the month, which is typically when we listed everyone out. So, it's kind of what you would have been seeing verbally. It's just a little report, so we don't spend as much time going through every single committee, including, you know, the special like CPAC and the special liaison, Hennepin-Crew Center, that kind of thing. But we'll keep an eye on that, absolutely. And Ellen, yes?
I also think it's fairly duplicative. I worry that if we put it in writing, members of the public won't necessarily read additional materials. There's so many materials that they have to go through in the meeting agendas and the meeting folders anyway. I, I also get a lot out of just hearing people report out verbally. I like the idea of consolidating those verbal report outs, which Mary Heather would then be documenting in our minutes as well, so they would still get written down. But then I can hear the committee chairs explain what's going on. So, if this is the will of, of the board, we can do it, but it feels like a solution without a problem.
Okay. And, and even if a report has been submitted, you can still talk about the highlights if you, you wanted to. Could we give it maybe a try? And, yeah, and Steve?
I mean, I, I hear what Steve and Ellen are saying, and I, I don't disagree with it. There are some things that I noticed, especially in something like the policy committee or negotiations. We don't feel like we're empowered to make those decisions, and so it's something that has to come to the board. So, it's something that, that's bubbling up. It's not necessarily the business that's taking place in those meetings. It's like, oh, we can't move forward on this until we get, you know, some direction from the board. I think that might be more, more what this is aimed towards rather than doing, you know, like you said, you're duplicating the minutes. I, I don't think that's the intention at all. Because, I mean, I can, I can sit here and go, oh, yeah, I've got a question that I need to ask the board under negotiations. And, and I know policy has had that, you know, several times. We need to know a direction that we're going. And I think that might still be an additive process here rather than trying to duplicate the minutes.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a good summary. Okay, so, let's give it a try. And again, you know, what Steve described here is a really good way, you know, to focus on it. I'm not expecting anyone to write a book here by any means. It could be that, you know, based on what's currently happening, it might be just a couple of sentences. Because it's, you know, it's in process and, you know, obviously, folks can go and look at the committee recordings anytime. Okay? Okay, thank you. So, moving forward, we will go down and do the report of the board, starting with communications and engagement. Tricia.
Yeah. We have our next committee meeting tomorrow. We are going to be discussing quarterly updates and how we might be able to tweak format and get information out more effectively. And then, our ongoing kind of project is setting ourselves up for the next school year, where we are planning on having two meetings a month. One that will be a work meeting here in Middlebury, and one that will be a traveling meeting. So that between September and February, we will visit the seven rural towns with a specific town hall-type opportunity. That's our current work.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on to finance, Jason.
You saw the bulk of what the finance committee has been looking at tonight in that update. One other thing I'll call out that Matt mentioned is that we are no longer looking at doing a competitive bid process for the next transportation contract, which had been the plan for the last couple of years, or to put that process in motion. Instead, we're seeking an extension with, a two-year extension with Betschel.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Facilities Committee, and this one.
Still Jason.
Yes, it's still Jason, and it's discussion and actions.
Yes, so the Facilities Committee met last week, a week ago, on the 20th. And we invited Leonard Barrett to come and clarify some items that needed clarification around the MUHS flagpole donation and discussion. So, the main things we wanted to clarify were Leonard's motivation for the separate flagpole. And so, we asked him, you know, again, what the motivation was. And he made pretty clear that his goal is to elevate and honor the American flag, and that he doesn't want any flag associated with that, whether it be the, the IB flag, or, you know, a flag of another country, if we're flying it for, you know, in honor of exchange students, or Black Lives Matter, or Pride Flag, or anything. He wants the American flag to stand on its own. And I also asked him to clarify when he left the high school for a period. That was in reaction to the additional flags being flown at, at the high school. And I think some folks had assumed that it was in reaction to the most recent flying of the Black Lives Matter flag at Mary Hogan, which was not the case. So, this was back in, I think it was the 20, either the 2020 to 2021 school year, or the 21 to 22 school year. In that timeframe, he mentioned. The other thing I wanted to clarify was the method and source of donations for the flagpole. And we just asked that prior to any work, beginning that the list of donors and contributors be made public and, you know, just be reviewed by the board. I think that was it. You can read the details in Mary Heather's excellent minutes of the Facilities Committee meeting, and you can also listen to the recording if you want.
Yes, Steve?
You have an action list to fear.
No, but that's a mistake.
Is there something the committee has to act on?
No, there, originally, we had the facility plan decision that we bypassed from. And so, when I did the template, the, the agenda, I had that on there. And we decided there's more work in the Facilities Committee that they wanted to do on that. And as I'm sitting here, I'm like, oh, crap, you know? I messed up. So, it's really just discussion.
And of course, I did notice it. So, I was sitting here, and I'm reading it, because I'm like, what's that?
Any other questions? Oh, Ellen, yes.
Yeah, this is really a comment. I, I didn't attend the last meeting when this discussion was in front of the full board. I've read the minutes, obviously, all the emails we've been receiving. And I just want to say, I find it incredibly awkward that we are asking a person who very, like, clearly explained part of his motivation to clarify his motivation again. It sounds like because we didn't like what he said the first time. And, yeah, I, I just, I, I guess, he spoke to the board, it's on public record. Members of the public have, have absorbed that message. And it feels like that is, that is. And it feels like that is in the community and that's a real answer too. So I don't really know what to do with this update. I don't know if it's meant to make us feel better about the lack of process in allowing a private citizen to dictate the terms under which flags are flown at our schools. But I don't feel better about this with the clarification. I appreciate the extra work that the Facilities Committee put into this, but I don't feel satisfied or more comfortable with the outcome of the board vote.
And, you know, and I can speak to part of that. You know, at the last board meeting, one thing that came out was that the financing of it was going to be from donations. And up until then, you know, we thought that, you know, it was coming from one person. So it was important to really clarify that aspect of it, to understand where the funding was coming from. Jamie?
So do we know now?
We will know prior to any work being done. Mary Heather?
I'll just report, just based on my memory, and you can verify this in the minutes from the Facilities Committee. I believe there were a couple of private individuals from Middlebury, the DeBishops and DeBrays. And then I believe Leonard had mentioned the possibility of working with the VFW, the Rotary and the Lions Club. Those were the folks that were mentioned as possible donors, all of whom are ACSD community groups or citizens who have standing in ACSD.
Any other questions for the Facilities Committee? Jamie?
So like, what, so I'm, I guess I'm confused what this update is for. Because I saw action on the thing too, and I was like, oh, we're gonna do something.
Right, and that's my bad.
No, it's okay. And I thought it was related to my email, because I emailed saying I would like to do something. And I thought that's what this, and I guess I feel like increasing, I feel even more uncomfortable now than I did last week and, or two weeks ago, whenever it was. And I feel like it's a bad idea. It sets a bad precedent, and we should not do it. Like, we should not have a flagpole just for the American flag. We shouldn't accept a private gift to do so. And so I would like to move us in the direction of changing that decision, which I believe was made in haste and is an incredible error, even if it was made with a good process. I listened to the Facilities Committee meeting. I appreciate some of the clarification. You know, I remember Caitlin spoke, you know, I don't even know if the high school knows about this. And so I don't know how to do that exactly, Robert's Rules-wise, but I would be interested in making a motion to sort of reverse our previous decision.
Well, per Robert's Rules, the only way that you can reverse a decision that was made previously is a motion to rescind. And, you know, that's possible. If, in fact, it's done in a meeting like here, you need two-thirds of the vote of the board to turn it over. If it's, you know, if you make your intent that you are gonna make the motion next board meeting, then it's the majority of the board, you know, based on, you know, the research I did on Robert's Rules.
Interesting.
Ellen?
Is the motion to rescind, is that different than a motion to revote on the issue?
You can't re, that's how you revote. You have to rescind it.
And then you're voting to either keep it or not?
Yes, yes. Right, so you basically are making a motion to rescind the motion that happened. So the decision that happened, so it would be like it didn't happen.
Vacate.
It's vacating, thank you.
And it looks like there's, you can also make a motion to amend.
You can make a motion, you know, well, the procedure is the same. If, whether it's an amendment, a change to something, a decision that was been made, or if, in fact, you wanted to vacate it. So it's the same process that happens in both cases, because it's changing a decision that had been previously made by the board.
Right, but so if, for instance, you wanted to say we would accept the flagpole, but without the stipulation that only the US flag, then that would be a motion to amend.
Right.
Versus.
That's true.
We shouldn't be accepting a donation at all, that would be a motion to rescind.
Yes. Thank you. Mary Heather?
I was just gonna ask if, in terms of precedent, if there is any interest in pushing this to the Policy Committee to think about creating some kind of a clear policy about what we do in this situation, which I'm sure has happened before and sure will happen again, where somebody wants to make a donation with some kind of condition attached to it.
Sure.
And whether we have leeway to.
A gift policy? Some districts have. It's a gift, yeah. So there's, the board could definitely direct the Policy Committee to create a gift policy, right? And direct the Policy Committee to do that. But at this point in time, that doesn't change the decision. We made a decision at our last board meeting to accept this.
Understood.
Yeah. Jess?
I just have a question, and I didn't watch the Facilities meeting, so sorry if this was discussed there. But I know there's gonna be some report back on where donations come from. Because the decision's already made, if that decision's not touched, can, can there not be any conditions? Like, I'm thinking of like, if you're putting something on grounds, like, what if $3,000 is raised and we get an invoice for $5,000 because it took them longer? So labor was more. Or what if the flagpole falls? Who pays for the damage if it's from a donation? Like, usually those things would be captured in a contract of some sort or reflected in a gift policy. And so if we made this decision and it stays, the decision we made, and then something like that happens and we don't have any of those safeguards in place? I guess I just don't know the path forward. Like, is there a world where the Facility Committee in upcoming meetings can kind of address some of those possibilities? Or can that not happen because this decision was like a, already happened? Does that make sense?
Some of it, Jess, is already in place. Like, you know, school district property, whether, however we acquire it, whether it was given to us, which some things are, or whether we purchased it, or whether we built it, we're responsible for it. So that's, that's kind of, that part's done. We don't really have any options around that. It becomes part of the public property and it's, and the public now owns it. In terms of the, of the, you know, when the donations are finished, you know, they'll first come to me, you know, and I will be doing the due diligence. Because as a public entity, we have ethical responsibility to accept funds that is in alignment with the expectations of public schools, you know, that serve all. So, so that'll, that would come through me. And then it would be a report, you know, that comes up in the superintendent's report. These are the donations and, you know, and for your awareness, we would also be ensuring that, that the amount of the donation is, covers the cost of the flagpole operationally, prior to any work happening, you know, including contingencies that are, that come up, to your, to your point. So that would be happening no matter what. Those aren't, those aren't special conditions. That's just kind of the way we would go about regular scope of business, if that's helpful.
So it doesn't, just to clarify, I guess I don't understand that. If someone's like, because it's like a raising money donation, as opposed to like, I'm gonna give you a minibus to own, you know, like, that's a thing. Like, at some point, money's gonna stop being raised and work's gonna start. So I guess I don't understand the order of operations.
And that happens a lot. You know, friends of have precedence for these things, right? They raise money for playground equipment. Playground equipment is installed. The school district is now responsible for maintenance of playground equipment and replacement of playground equipment often, when it doesn't work anymore and everybody really wants another one. So, so, you know, we have practices in place that relate to that. And we would just be applying those practices in this circumstance, you know, just like I'm sure you did when you accepted any funds that may have been donated relative to the football stands or, you know, right? Which I notice are named after someone or so on and so forth. This is, it's kind of that same conversation.
But I guess the difference would be that, like, this is an individual raising money on behalf of it, as opposed to like, if you want to donate money to the, to give our teachers lunch, bring it to the front office.
It's actually not different from large-scale investments like playground. That's the one that probably most people have, you know, some concept of. So when, when a, when a playground, piece of playground equipment or an entire playground, which can come into the millions of dollars, is put together by a friends of group, thankfully. You know, often that involves a number of private donations and so on and so forth. Typically, the school district retains control of the safety regulations and, you know, the choosing of things and so on and so forth, because it is our property. And all of that would be the case here. In this case, the flagpole would be the flagpole of our choosing, from the company of our choosing, you know, put in, in the way that we believe is important and necessary. You see what I'm saying? So that we're all, we're doing that in the same way that we would any other piece of property that we would be taking ownership of.
And Ellen has her hand up, and then Tricia.
Just pointing out that I don't believe anyone's ever donated.
Playground equipment and told us how to use it or who was allowed to use it and put, attach those stipulations to that donation. And this is a donation that at least is partly motivated from the perspective of feeling heartbroken that this individual saw a Black Lives Matter flag flying on school property. So I appreciate all of those, those ties into precedent. But I'm with Jamie. This feels unique, and it does set a different precedent that I think the board should be taking very seriously, more seriously than the process leading up to the vote a couple of weeks ago would have done justice.
Tricia?
I was going to ask how the stipulation of financial review works with our past motion. Right, since our motion didn't say anything about yes if, right? Is that a problem or is that something that we would need to amend a motion for?
So as a trustee of public funds, you know, and we subscribe to those codes of ethics anyway. Our auditors would require that, you know, so that would happen no matter what. You know, any project that is happening where the school district is taking in funds, you know, from private sources, those funds are always, you know, very transparent in terms of who is making the donation and so on and so forth. So that would be done no matter what. The board doesn't have to instruct us to do that. That's part of our process.
Steve?
Well, one, I'm not exactly sure what standing I have, because I wasn't in part of that decision when the board voted on it, so.
You're part of the board?
You're part of the board.
Yep.
Fair enough. So as motions come up, I do just want to acknowledge that. But I guess, and I'll probably mispronounce the name, but the McGelton Fund? That does have some stipulations on it, right?
Yes, yes.
All right. And so that's, I've been thinking about that as far as precedent. You know, because I believe at a other board meeting, Steve was mentioning some of the stipulations with that. And so I'm just trying to kind of think of how we've navigated that and then having this. I'm also looking at the A23 Community Engagement and Vision Policy. And the second part of that first paragraph, "The Addison Central School District recognizes that community support is based on a mutual exchange, a dynamic process in which the district contributes to the community's success and in turn benefits from the community's resources." And so, like, there is an exchange there. I do have some concerns on this one as well, but like, that policy clearly identifies that exchange from the community to the district. So I, yeah, I'm trying to put that together and figure out a stance on this one.
Jamie?
I guess I, I feel, I think, I guess I feel kind of like Ellen did, that playground equipment is different. I think we can all agree, if someone wanted to give us a new playground equipment, we'd be like, sure, if we need one, that would be great. Thank you very much, right? But like, this is obviously different. And it is different in every way. I mean, you know, Leonard, you said yourself, like, you were motivated by feelings about the flag. If I'm getting it right, you left work for six months.
Jamie, that's, yeah, you can't talk, you can't do that. That's not appropriate.
Okay, this was in the Facilities Committee, I'm just.
It's something that, it's a.
I'm, okay, okay.
HRP is in, it's something that someone, as part of it, could say, but we can't say it. Yeah.
Okay, here's, okay, so let me rephrase this.
And you need to direct it to me. Yeah, don't direct it to the, if you have, you know, comments.
So there, okay, there's been stated obvious levels of, I don't know what the right, like, turmoil related to the symbology, the power of symbol of the flag. That's what we're arguing about. Like, we're really not talking about the technicalities of how a gift may be whatever. The quality and the content of that thing is what we're arguing about. It's what all the letters we received were about. Because that's what people care about. And I find, I guess it, I just, it's hard to believe again that we're making these comparisons to things that are just simply apples and oranges. And so I'll just read, you know, I think we should change it. I get the impression from what Barb said that I could make a motion now to that effect, or I could make a motion next week. Next meeting, sorry, excuse me. I would be happy to do that, next meeting, to allow people to have more time and space to think about it and let everyone have gel in their head and bounce those ideas around. But that's, I guess, where I'm feeling right now.
So you're basically, I'm just rephrasing what you said. You're letting us know that you plan to make a motion to rescind, rescind the motion that we, the decision that we made two weeks ago about the flag, accepting the flag gift.
Yeah.
Rescind or amend?
It would have to be rescinded.
I don't know how I would amend it, I guess. I guess rescind, yeah. No, it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Steve?
You could make those asks to the Executive Committee for the next meeting, but it seems like we are so far away from a simple committee report at this point, that if this is something that people want to discuss, that it should be added to the next meeting agenda and that we should not be continuing this discussion right now. It feels, it feels out of order, so.
It, per the motion to rescind, he's, has the right to be able to say that he's going to make the motion. And I think that's the conversation, and that really ends the conversation. Ellen?
There was some discussion in the other meeting, Facilities Meeting, that person making the motion had to be somebody who had voted to.
No, that's, I was incorrect. I was thinking, if, in fact, during the meeting, we had made the motion and then in the same meeting, we decided to reconsider, you had to be on the positive side of voting for it. But that only. you had to be on the positive side of voting for it. But that only pertains to a motion to reconsider.
In the same meeting.
In the same meeting.
Okay.
And this is a different motion and anyone can make this motion.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mary Heather?
I was gonna bring up the same question, just to make sure that we are following Robert's rules.
Yes, yeah.
And, um, and so if there's any questions about process, I think it would be helpful.
I have it all here. If you would like, I could send this out to everyone.
Yeah.
And I'll just email, um, my summary that I researched in Robert's rules as long, it also includes the, um, reference page number where I got the information. Okay, Ron?
I can just make one more quick comment. Um, I think if we are going to revisit this in a couple of weeks, I don't want to belabor the point, but, um, seeing as we're, our goal for the next year is to improve the ways that we're interacting with the community, I think this would be a good opportunity, especially since we know based on feedback we've been getting that people care about this issue. I think this would be a good testing grounds perhaps for trying to have a public dialogue about the question of accepting a gift of this kind with this kind of condition.
Um, so at this point, we've made the decision and really our choice is to, you know, have, if someone wants to make a motion to rescind it, we'll do the formal vote and, you know, however the cards fall, they fall. Um, doing, you know, I, you know, and I throw that out. I mean, community, we have received community input on it. Um, you know, the, maybe there's a different dialogue, um, that we can have that's centered around, you know, board policy, um, with the flag policy or, you know, something like that. Um, that we, you know, I'm not going to get into that here, uh, because it's not on the agenda. But, um, I'm not sure it's appropriate at this point to open this up, um, and having a community forum on this specific issue at this point in time. Okay. So if we could move to the next, um, thank you, Jason, um, to the policy, um, committee, um, update.
Sure, I can try to be short and sweet. Um, we just met like two, a couple of hours ago. Um, over the past couple of meetings, we've mostly been discussing again the C, uh, policy C thirty, which is about school residents. Um, lately, I think we've been drifting toward a, a discussion that kind of goes like we've received, um, or the district receives a, a fair amount of communication about where, um, C thirty, C thirty request through C thirty. People are familiar with this by now after the Ripton discussion. And, um, and it seems like increasingly many of those are falling just pretty far outside the policy. And, um, so we're trying to figure out what that means. And, uh, so the plan moving forward for the next meeting then would, is to, is to sort of, um, examine other ways in which that policy could potentially meet those or, or more effectively deal with those requests or, or does it not, or those, or no change at all, or ways that, um, the policy is inadequate to deal with the kind of feedback that we're getting, uh, which would, and which would require either amending that policy or developing a new policy that is different for school residents. So that's sort of the work. I hope I'm not being too vague, but that's sort of the work that we've been doing. Um, this policy's been on our agenda for, for, you know, almost a year now. And, um, but it's been, uh, it's been a good discussion and, um, I hope I'm not leaving anything out from my, my committee members can chime in. But that's sort of where, where we left things.
Mary Heather?
Is the policy committee doing any work to examine how, uh, the policy can try to guarantee sustainable enrollments in the schools that we have? Has there been investigation of exploring changing lines, how to adjust budget basements for schools? Because that seems to be a, a, a real problem for our district.
Yeah.
You go ahead.
If you don't mind. Um, we had a very interesting conversation with, especially with Wendy today, really trying to clarify some roles of what is actually policy work versus what is operational work versus what is facilities work and all of that. Um, so I think what we, we kind of came to as our first step, or our next step, I should say, it's not the first step, our next step, is, uh, trying to think of some various paths that we could move toward with the policy and then work on getting community feedback on those potential directions and figuring out the best way to move forward to inform the operations side of things. Does that sound somewhat correct? If I may, my, yeah, cool.
I, I guess one more thing I was adding in response to your question, which I think is great. It's been hard for us to figure out exactly where like policy ends and everything else begins. And at times we feel like we're taking on this huge sort of, uh, you know, problem of every, of, you know, variety of things. And, um, and we're, I think today we refocused more on what exactly should be on our plate in front of us. Hopefully that will take us to July.
Okay, any other questions? Ron?
Can I just ask a question of clarification? Is that discussion al- also to do with how we deal with what's coming down the pike from the legislative, legislative changes that are coming or is that a separate discussion?
I mean, I think we, I think when it's like, when, if the discussion with the policy is, is about where you go to school. And then if the, if there's things on the table about, well, what's, what's schools, right? Like, that's a constant question that we're always, that's what we're always dealing with. And the four fifty-four raises that question in, in new ways. So we've been like thinking about it, but it's not like we've been, I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, directly engaging too much with that outside what, as a board, we've heard and done.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, student outcomes committee, Ellen?
Negotiations committee.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, we have not met, but I do have two questions. Um, we, in deference to Superintendent, uh, said that we were not going to meet, um, through April. Well, now we're to the end of May. Can we start meeting again?
Yes.
Um, is, is the first question. And the second question is, any luck in finding a third person or Jamie and I going to be doing this on our own?
Jamie, it's me, Suzanne. No, I'm not dropping off.
Oh, I thought.
No.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not bailing on you, Steve, but Suzanne is, is the, is your, is your.
I'm your, your, your clerk of your committee and I'm not bailing, but if you'd like me to bail.
No, no, no. Okay, I misunderstood because Jamie asked who's leaving.
No.
So I thought that meant he was still on.
No.
No, it's confusing.
I see.
Yeah.
I mean, no one has volunteered.
Got it.
To fill that position. And I mean, if Jamie wants to continue on it, he can continue on it. His plate's full.
No, I'm good. No, I'm good. No, I think, I think you guys, I think you guys would be, would be great. I mean, it would be good if someone else wants to join. It's the learning, it's an education.
I'd volunteer for that.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay.
We have our third.
Well, thank you for having me, giving, bringing me back to where I was supposed to be. Okay, uh, student outcomes committee.
Uh, the student outcomes committee is met once. We're meeting again on Friday. Our, at our first meeting, we talked a lot about the charge, um, as determined by the board and also kind of the major pieces of information and inquiry that we want to dive into as a, as a committee. And the first is really understanding the different tools and measures ACSD uses to, um, understand student outcomes and doing that on, um, a, a number of different levels. And so Courtney is gonna, um, educate us on Friday at our next meeting and kind of walk us through some of the context. And then also, I think just really the, the list of measures and tools that are used to, um, help us understand how are, how are students doing? How are they succeeding? What do they need? So that's going to be what we focus on at the next phase.
Actually, we did that.
Can we just, do you want to go ahead, Steve?
No, go ahead, cause you took minutes.
I did. Um, so I just add, uh, that we did have a second meeting and Courtney provided a really detailed, um, spreadsheet of all the assessment, um, avenues we have for, um, understanding. And, um, it was a really helpful update, um, but it's all still very preliminary and, and happening in parallel with the data committee that the district is running. Um, I'm, I don't want to go into too much detail because it's all quite preliminary, but, um, that's, that's what we did, I think, early.
Oh, my gosh, I missed the meeting. I'm so.
You missed the meeting.
I'll send you the, I'll send you the note, Ellen.
We've all been there, Ellen.
It's a great rundown of the first meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, next, um, the Hannaford Career Center. Is there any update Laura and Steve?
Did you want to say anything or?
I don't have anything specific to say.
Okay, um, so there's been, uh, there's a lot of discussion, um, about the legislation because CTE is impacted even more so than, in fact, when this goes into effect, the board disappears.
Yeah.
Um, there will not be an independent board for the Career Center anymore. Um, and it will probably fall under whatever district, um, it ends up serving. So there's a lot of anxiety about that. Um, and there has been a lot of, uh, following of what's going on with the legislature. Uh, and I think you feel like you're getting a lot of it here. Um, Hannaford gets a lot more. Uh, and, uh, yeah, so a, a lot hangs in the balance. One good thing that we think is coming is that, um, right now, uh, our sister district down at Stafford, um, they are way oversubscribed. There are a lot of kids that are not allowed to go into, uh, the career and technical, um, side because they simply don't have space for them. And they're close enough where we could get them. But legislation says that those boundaries are hard boundaries and you can't cross those boundaries. If this legislation passes, they will soften those boundaries and we will be able to recruit people from Stafford. So that's, that's really good because then that lowers the per pupil cost, which should be good news for us here at ACSD because if Stafford students are coming here, then Outer Valley is paying part of that, that fee instead of, uh, uh, all being footed by us. So, so that's a good thing in all the clouds, um, that are, that are happening right now. Um, as far as the programs go, everything is going well. Uh, recruiting is going well. Um, some, some key losses over the past year look like they're going to be replaced by some pretty strong candidates. Um, and, uh, yeah, things are going fairly well. The budget discussion again looms, uh, and again, because of the eight million dollar bond that is hanging over us and the healthcare costs that are being passed on in the, in the coming budget cycle, um, there's a lot of fear, um, about how we're gonna keep costs contained. So.
Okay. Thank you.
One question.
A question? Yes, Mary Heather.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there discussion at the Career Center board level about how red, how redistricting might happen? I know obviously it's kind of at the hands of whoever is assembled by state players, but has there been discussion among the board and CTE leaders about having CTE centers be kind of the gravitational pull for these new districts? Is there motion on that or anything?
Yeah, and that's a good question because, um, Hannaford is one of four centers in the state that operates the way it does. Everything else is attached to a school district. Um, and so, uh, if, uh, if the legislature is looking at continuing that model to say that now that we make these new districts, whatever they look like, we are going to designate a career center, um, that then becomes the magnet for that, for, for, for that, um, for that district. And Hannaford is perfectly placed for that because it is a separate facility. Um, it has a lot of resources available to it. So if it comes down to that discussion of what our district is going to look like, it's probably going to include Hannaford, which will also be a magnet, um, for this district. So those are all good things. Um, and, uh, every other technical center in the state, other than the, the four that I mentioned, um, they operate that way already. Uh, we would just be pulling from a larger area, which is a good thing.
Thanks.
Do you have capacity for what, two hundred?
Yeah, and, well, more because North Campus, I don't think North Campus is included in the two hundred. Um, so, yeah. And whether we keep North Campus or not, that's, that's still on the, um, that, that's still on the table. But if we expand the number of people that we have, it makes sense to keep North Campus or something like North Campus, um, to handle that excess capacity. So.
Okay. It, it really does sound that even if it was a student was outside our district in the future, having a way to tuition in, if that other program is full, you know, really makes a lot of sense.
It, it does, but the legislature has, I mean, CTE is, is.
I know, I know.
I don't want to say the redheaded stepchild, but the redheaded stepchild.
Going forward, going forward.
Of all this process, they, they don't talk about CTE when they talk about education. Um, the whole House bill left out CTE, even in the, even in the talking about redistricting. So, you know, it's, it's like, hey, guys, what about us? Um, and, uh, they're starting to pay attention now. Um, so hopefully that, that heightened level of attention will get us more pull with the legislature. Again, how, how it affects this district, whatever this district ends up being, is it can really only be a good thing because of the support that Hannaford's gotten in the past. Um, so it's a very robust program. Um, and if you've seen CTE programs around the state, it is, I, I mean, it really is, um, a, a powerful program that we don't have much of in the state. So it, it's a good thing to keep and it's a good draw for this district. So.
Well, thank you. Um, next is the CPAC. Did Mary Heather or Suzanne, do you want to say anything more than what was in the report?
Um, CPAC has been busy. I mean, even when they aren't meeting, they're busy. They're busy sitting in on interviews and giving feedback and, um, doing every, every time they're asked, they find volunteers to come to the table to help out. So, um, they're very interested in being a partner and, um, being a voice of parents, of students with special needs. So, um, I guess I would leave it at that. I mean, they do say that we're going to meet again, but the again part hasn't been quite determined yet when our next meeting is. So we'll just wait.
Yeah. Thank you. And, um, anything more to share with the, um, Vermont School Board Association as her rep?
Um, well, the emails come quite frequently, sometimes three in an hour. Um, but we've been getting a lot of updates on where H four fifty-four is going, the House version, the Senate version. Um, no one yet has really figured out what's going to happen once the hundred and seventy-seven million that's being borrowed from the general and the education fund to bring the taxes down, how we're going to fill that back hole. Um, people better start really buying because we need to fill a hundred and seventy-seven million dollar hole. Um, the resolutions committee is going to be meeting July ninth, I believe it is, to go over any resolutions that are submitted and those would then be voted on at the annual meeting in October. And, um, the other thing that's of interest that some people may or may not know is that there was a bill in Montpelier that was looking at how, um, the healthcare piece, the negotiations between employees and employers was, um, when it got to the table and, um, ended up going to, um, like a stalemate and then they had to intervene, that bill was killed by the NEA. So, um, that didn't go any further. So we'll be going back to the table and I think they go back this fall to start negotiating again. But I guess that's pretty much what's going on at VSB.
Thank you. Um, Middlebury Community TV, um, the only thing I, and I've said this in the past, but, um, one of the things that's changing, um, you know, for a Middlebury Community TV is really their source of revenue. Um, it, part of the deal with cable, uh, with Comcast was that they give money, um, to MCTV based on the subscribership and as. And as folks know, cable is less in demand because of things like fiber, that kind of thing. So one of the things that we need to think about as one of their primary, you know, customers per se, is do we include anything in the budget? This go around, that's what the town of Middlebury does. Does, you know, provide some, you know, support to MCTV. So that's something that I think we need to kind of think about and keep on the radar for the Finance Committee and going forward. Because it is, you know, I believe it's a, you know, a really good service that it offers to the entire district. You know, to have that service available and streaming and being able to go in and get the view the recordings of our meetings that are indexed by topic, which is really wonderful. Go ahead, Mary Heather.
I was just going to ask if you if we have a sense of just the ballpark of what that could have been.
Yeah, I, and off the top of my head, I don't want to put a number out there, but I do know, you know, I can find it of what Middlebury, the town of Middlebury, you know, provides. I'm pretty sure it's, I'm not going to even guess because I'll probably guess incorrectly. My memory isn't that good, but I will follow up on that.
Do we know if they have federal funds in jeopardy?
I'm going to let Drew talk.
I'm going to answer that.
Yeah.
So, yes, because the, our funding comes from an FCC ruling from '83. That FCC ruling is in jeopardy because of Donald Trump's delete, delete, delete method that he's called, that he is saying the FCC has no right to regulate anything, period. So that would end our funding completely.
You are 100% federally funded.
Yes. All all public access throughout the, throughout the nation is 100% funded by that FCC ruling. Some states have moved towards a streaming tax model. Massachusetts, New York State, California now tax Netflix, Amazon, whatever, and to make up that difference. But the vast majority, even of those states, still comes from that FCC ruling in the eighties, which, thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Drew.
My Netflix account has a sales tax associated with it.
I didn't hear that.
I said my Netflix and my Amazon account has sales taxes associated with it.
We wanted something.
Oh. Okay, so moving forward is our second public comment period. And there's no public in the room. Is there any public lines at this point? And if so, is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, seeing none. The next item is Board Reflections. Are there any reflections that folks would like to share at this point in time? Steve.
Steve. So I was under the understanding that we had a agreement, and I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, that when public comment came to the board, that the response was simply to be that Mary Heather was going to acknowledge it and that we were not going to engage in a discussion that way. And that was my understanding that that was how we were going to handle all the email coming in. So if that has changed, if it has not, I would would hope that people would respect that agreement.
I believe that has not changed. However, I don't know that that was brought to the attention of our new board members.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that was the issue.
That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Mary Heather.
I also want to clarify, I think, I mean, that's kind of the process that we have established just so that we make sure that no incoming emails are left kind of unanswered and not landing. But there's nothing that prohibits board members from responding to folks. So I just want to make sure, like, I don't have, I don't believe I'm the only one who can respond to emails that come in. We all serve all of our, you know, ACSD stakeholders, so so I just want to put that out there, too.
I would say an important thing, though, is to make it clear if you are responding on your own, that you are not talking on behalf of the entire board.
Yes.
Right, and so that's, that is something that gets a little tedious, but you will notice, I mean, even in all of Mary Heather's responses, I do not speak for the board, right? And that that is a required phrase if you are speaking. Because you're not speaking for the entire board unless.
Right.
We're here making a motion.
Right.
Ellen has her hand up.
Yeah, Ellen.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, Mary Heather, because I actually had never interpreted that we were not allowed or supposed to respond. I'm really grateful to you for taking on that responsibility as you have. But I don't think there should be the message, you know, Tricia, it's a great point. We need to take care to explain that we're speaking for ourselves, not the board. But I don't think anyone should feel like we're not, we're not empowered to respond to emails that we receive as board members. That is not my understanding of what we agreed to at all. Though, again, very grateful to Mary Heather for taking on the vast, vast majority of that labor. But I really appreciated Ron's response. I thought it was sharing information with the public that's worth knowing that people may not realize if they don't follow all of the meeting schedules and things like that.
Any other reflections?
Barbara, you talked about the the town and their contribution to MCTV.
And you're going to find it.
It is, yes, it's in in the town budget. And they requested a $1,000 increase to $6,000.
Yeah. I was going to say 5,000.
Looks like it was $5,000 for years and years and years, and they have now requested a $1,000 increase.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Tricia.
Yeah.
Jason.
Jason.
I'd like to say thank you very much to whoever did the time estimates for this agenda. It was spot on.
Thank you, thank you. Any other reflections? You still have a minute. Cheesy. Okay, if not.
I could just say, I did not nominate you as a board that is worthy of distinction, but I but I do feel your work merits that. You know, you you work through hard things where you don't always agree and you represent different constituent points of view and you you work through them respectfully in ways that that are thorough. And and I and I really appreciate working for you in that respect. And so I, you know, it's 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 important to remember as board members, we are models for our kits of the civic process. And I and that's something that I think this board is, in my time with you, has always demonstrated a really clear commitment to. And and I think the educators in the room really appreciate that and and count on you for that. And so I I just, you know, I guess I, I didn't personally nominate you, but I I appreciate why you might have attracted the attention of someone who appreciates the work that you're doing, you know, because I certainly do as well, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Jamie.
Just one more thing, high school graduation.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Does anyone maybe, especially for the new people, want to say anything about what that? Like, there's a parade.
Yes, so I can.
Right, and then there's a thing, like the whole graduation ceremony, so.
Right, so I think I sent an email out on this, but let me do it again.
You have Caitlin.
And we have Caitlin, who's answered. So Monday, or Friday morning, the sixth.
Yeah.
Not this, yeah.
Not this Friday, but next Friday.
But the following is the parade. And we usually in the past at 8:30, right, we're, no.
What time?
Okay, it's when you, I'm thinking when people need to be here.
Stepping off at nine, so get here before.
Yeah, you have to be lined up by nine.
And you line up in front of the high school on the road heading.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Show up in front of the high school and you'll see where everyone is.
Right behind the band.
Yep, right behind the band because we're so important, right? Yes. And then on Saturday, the seventh, at 10 o'clock, is the graduation. And we, you need to RSVP if you haven't so that there will be a chair for you. Unless, we do have some parents of graduates here, so they won't be able to sit with the group. But so there's enough chairs that are there for us. But that is on Saturday at 10 o'clock.
Sorry, the seventh.
The seventh.
And it is pretty much expected that the board is present at graduation. The parade is a nicety. Graduation is much more of an expected presence.
If you have not experienced the parade before.
It's fun.
It is, it's walking from here down Route seven to the Memorial Sports Center, the hockey rink. And there are parents who line up along the way to cheer on their kids. And then all the Mary Hogan students come out by grade level. So they they all have their signs that say, like, class of 2036. Like, I don't know at this point.
That hurts.
That's what's cool.
It does hurt. But it is a very joyous activity.
Yep, Mary Heather.
And I was just going to add, if you have the time and are interested, right after the parade is the awards ceremony at the Memorial Sports Center. It is a little bit of a lengthy ceremony, but one of the wonderful things is this is where they announce all awards and some scholarships. And it's just really great to see how our community supports our kids and financially invests in our kids who are graduating and continuing their education beyond. So it's just really good to just have that in your mind, who all is contributing.
It's a significant amount of money, it's millions of dollars.
Keep it in your heart for those organizations, yeah, for sure.
Caitlin, there's also, there's another thing, right?
We have responded to the complaints that that assembly is quite long.
Oh.
And have moved some of the awards into a senior awards night, which is new this year on June 2nd. So you will get, it will be dosed.
Lots of opportunities.
Yes.
Is all of this in the high school, the times? I know we have invitations for graduation, but the award ceremony will be in the high school newsletter if we wanted to see the time.
We sent out a senior mailing. Did you get the calendar of events for the seniors?
Um, no.
No.
No, let me get that.
Okay, thank you. We're seeing the parade and graduation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you for bringing that up. How about a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
A second? Okay, thank you all.